Good afternoon, everyone. Today is a study session for the Prescott City Council. It's Tuesday, May 24th, 1:00 P.M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Sishka.
Here.
Councilwoman Tenny.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Hall is absent from the meeting.
Mayor, with your permission, may I go to my office really quick and grab my iPad? Then I forgot. I'll be back in one moment.
Absolutely. We'll hold these substantial discussions until you return. Thank you all for coming today. Appreciate your attendance here. So we're going to begin this as soon as Councilwoman Tenny returns. We're going to have a presentation from the Prescott Food Forest. So who will be presenting today?
John.
Oh, look at that.
He's coming in right now.
Looked like a choreographed entrance, exactly as a...
That was that good.
Asking the shell to get up.
And knocking the door will be opened.
That's right. Hey, you're getting good at that, Mayor.
Here we go. Are you ready, John? Or do you want to start it off, Joe?
Yeah, I'll begin and start it off.
Okay.
Just a couple of background points I wanted to bring up. So I've been working with this group for probably the better part of a year. As most of you know, we had a community garden in Prescott from 2011 to 2019, and it ultimately closed. It didn't have enough volunteer presence. So I've been working with these guys for over a year, trying to really drill down on what their failures were, the previous garden, and try to make sure we don't fall into that same trap. John presented this to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board on May 16th, and they made a positive recommendation on it. I wanted to point out also, there is the K-9 Training Unit is out in this area, too. And part of my discussions with the police department was building a 30-foot buffer between the two facilities with a screen fence on the one side that faces the K-9 Training Center. And with that, I'll introduce John Murphy with the Prescott Food Forest.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for your time to hear what we have to say. I think that the idea of a community garden is really the fabric of any city. And we have a very good group of folks here that have a lot of different skills from...
Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm going to need you to stand back a little bit from the microphone, please, okay?
Okay, sure. No problem. As you see, we have the slideshow there, so, okay. Is that better? Is that better? Sorry. I used to be a DJ, so my hearing's not so good. Anyway, the concept for the Prescott Food Forest is just that, to have a lot of food, to be able to have a place where people can learn all types of gardening. And before we get into the detail of our plan, I don't think there's ever been a time in our history that is more important than right now for our citizens to learn how to grow food. We see that there, in the past two years, have been some food shortages. There are food shortages that are predicted for the future. There's a lot of processing plants that have been burnt down, and there is even people that are talking about the word famine. I hope it doesn't get to that. I don't think it will. But it really reinforces the point of why we are here. We are here because we want to teach people how to grow their own food, how to do it locally. And I'm going to reflect back to a Yavapai County Board of Commissioners study that was led by Harvey O'Grady. And when they did a whole study on food security, after all they did, all the research, they came back and they said backyard gardening. Just to give you a little history, the precursor to the Prescott Food Forest was our Victory Garden Mission. Our Victory Garden Mission was to grow 1 million new Victory Gardens across the country, starting right here in Prescott. Why? Well, our first reason was to reduce obesity and diabetes, basically from lifestyle habits, and to get people to have a relationship with real food, not canned food, boxed food, and so forth. That's how we started. The Victory Garden started in World War I with Wildrow Wilson. World War II, it was expanded into the U.K., Britain. And it was a great program. Forty-three percent of all the food that was grown in the United States was grown from people's backyards gardens in 1943. We won the war. That's good. But the program went away in the '50s. We had fast food, you know, TV dinners. And since then, our citizens of our world, our country, have been adversely impacted to the point where we have rampant diabetes and obesity. So that was my first reason. But now, we want to really help people to grow their own food so they can eat nutritionally. If we can go to the second slide, I'd appreciate it. So we have about a half acre of land, a little more than a half acre that we're dealing with, Joe.
An acre.
A little less than an acre, so it's not going to be a countywide farm. That's not realistic. But what it is, it's a wonderful spot that already has water, and it already has electric, and it's already fenced in. Those three things are critical to the success of a community garden. We are calling it a gardening discovery center. And the reason that we took that is that we think that this is going to be mostly demonstrative. We're going to demonstrate all the different types of gardening, from in-the-ground, to raised bed, container, aeroponic, hydroponic. There's so many ways to grow food. And so it's going to be an educational bent. I have Stephanie Lee on. She is a teacher, and she is going to lead our educational program. Everything from basic gardening to family programs, to a mommy-and-me program. And we've got groups. We have representatives of the Prescott Lakes Community Gardening Club. It's a volunteer basis. We have about 30 members, but we don't have a garden. So we're going to have a lot of volunteers there. We want to give back to our community. Ten percent of everything we grow is going to go to the food banks. Have a great relationship with Burt I-Jams, the Prescott Meals on Wheels. And she said, "Boy, I really like to buy your food." And she buys some Shamrock right now. So whereas Anne Schoen is a master chef and a baker, and she is working on the Yavapai Food and Health Services to get this program up so that we get approved, so we can sell food to organizations like Meals on Wheels. Wow. People that are less healthy than most, they're shut-ins, they're lower economic scale, are going to get fresh, naturally grown homegrown food right here, instead of going down to Shamrock and going through a regular distribution system. And this is about bringing the community together. Our whole thing is, this is a place where people grow together. It's not left, it's not right, it's not red, it's not blue. It is just the right thing to do. And so, one of the things that we looked at, if you can go to the next slide, is we want to learn from history. And Joe, I have to take my hat off, has been very, very diligent in making sure that we realize the sustainability of this project is the key. And so we looked at the old community garden, which none of us here had anything involved with. We just know from history, and I've talked to Ken Lane, whose daughter was part of it. So we're going to hire a full-time gardening manager. We are looking at an AmeriCorps grant for $10,000. That's available for these programs. We are putting in our budget $1,200 a month for a paid person. We have lots of volunteers, but a fully volunteer model is dangerous for us to proceed with because volunteers are volunteers, and they can show up or not. For us to have the name Prescott Food Forest, why did we pick that? We want abundance. We don't want to have barrenness. One of the reasons that the other community garden failed is because they didn't really produce a lot. It wasn't fenced. It was in an area where there was a lot of people that just could go and take what they wanted. And ultimately, there was, you know, just a degradation of the project. We have no intention of doing that. We have every intention of making this sustainable, a legacy program that will last for generations to come. The modern growing methods that I talked about, and I know that water's a big issue here in Prescott and anywhere, one of the features of this program is going to be a greenhouse that is going to have aeroponic tower gardens. These gardens take about 10% of the water to grow. And we look at selling to folks like, organizations like Prescott Meals on Wheels. These are modern, state-of-the-art, no insects, no bugs, no pesticides, and you use 10% of the water, and it can be done 12 months a year. We have some ideas on how we're going to accomplish that cost-effectively. And so, anyway, we're here to share with you that our next slide is, we're going to teach people. We're going to empower people. What's the old saying, right? If you give somebody a fish, they'll eat for the day. But if you teach them how to fish, they're going to be able to eat for the rest of their lives. Well, I'm going to use that same analogy right here. If we teach people how to grow their own food, they're going to know what nutrition is. I could ask the council members rhetorically, "Have you ever tasted a tomato from your backyard versus a tomato that's been sitting in the food market?" It doesn't even taste like the same food. It's different. And there's a lot of processing, a lot of the different chemicals. This is all natural. So if you look on the slide up here, this is a future version of what our indoor greenhouse could be. That is all aeroponic. By meaning aeroponic, it's air, and the water drips down inside on the roots, but it's air. Very effective growing. There's a lot of companies out there that are doing this. True Garden Down in Glendale is really our mentor. They sell to restaurants, they sell to the schools, they give to charity. That's really what we're looking to do. So Stephanie is leading up the gardening classes. We're going to have seminars. Deborah Odd is never here. Deborah's right here. Deborah's a retired principal, and she is going to lead up the school program for class trips and helping them set up gardens where they are. And we're looking for little mini gardening gurus. And we want people to be passionate about growing food. But one of the things is about gardening and growing food is, it all comes a lot at the same time. And then in September, like, hey, you want some tomatoes? So one of the things that we think is an important part of the ecosystem of gardening is preservation, canning, preserving, all these types of things, pickling. And Kathy Mayo is a homesteader who is very, very well-versed in food preservation, and we think that's going to be a big part of making people more passionate about gardening because they're going to be able to stretch it out. You know, the tomato sauce in November, December can happen now. And one of the things that we really like is, no sense growing food unless you're going to have delicious food to eat. So we're going to have, hopefully, a Master Chef classes. Barry Barbie, I've talked to him, the Peters over at Farm Provisions. There's so many restaurants here that want to be involved in this. And it would be nice for them to have an evening where they teach their secrets, and we get people all together. We're going to do a lot of cooking classes. And that's going to be one of the things that's going to help us. Most of these things are going to be free to the public. Some events may be a small nominal fee based on the exclusiveness or the person that we're bringing in. We might have to bring somebody in that's $1,000 to cover our costs. So if we look at the location, that is a, you know, a Google shot of the area that's totally fenced. You see the dog park right next to us. That's Willow Creek Road. To the left is Embry-Riddle, and right adjacent to us is the Heritage Park Zoo. I feel there's an affinity with the zoo. Joe Rubio, who's a master gardener, helped build the raised beds to feed the animals natural food. So that's pretty cool. And he's raising his hand with Leroy Miller, who is going to be our acting garden manager. These are certified master gardeners with the University of Arizona program. And we have a lot more that they have lined up as well, master gardeners. So we have about an acre. We say it's a two-acre parcel. I think the whole parcel might be two acres, but our space will be about an acre. It's already been planned in the master lakes, master plan of 1999, to be a community garden. Right now, it is Parks and Rec's storage. And so Joe was the one that actually said, "This could be a good place," and it checks a lot of boxes, and we've been working real hard to make this happen. The fact that it's already fenced, the level is great, and while there may be some that say, "We'd like to do something downtown." I'd love to do something downtown. I don't know where we would do it. But as we grow, our growth is to the north. I think this area is more centrally located. The zoo's there, Embry-Riddle's there, the ball fields are there. I love it. Last night, I saw all the lights on. I said, "You know, everybody that's going to go play ball, all the kids are going to go past the garden." So let's get down to the nuts and bolts of how we're going to sustain this project. First of all, our main focus is community education. All about education, teaching people how to grow food, how to maintain it, how to harvest it, how to preserve it, and how to eat it. We are going to do a traditional community garden. We have raised beds, and we have in-ground plans. The in-ground, because we're so late in the season, we're going to go right to a giant pumpkin patch. And the Frontier Rotary Club has raised their hands and said they'd like to support that. We have some fellow Rotarians here. And all I can tell you is, we're going to create a lot of excitement and energy. How are we going to make some money on this? Well, we're not going to make any money. We're a nonprofit. But how do we sustain it with money coming in? Sponsorships will be the first thing. If and when you approve this, the next thing we're going to do is be going to all the community businesses and individuals. We have a program all set. Let's Get Growing Prescott. You have the... And I'm very proud of the logo that Stephanie designed. And so, Let's Get Growing Prescott, it kind of fits right into a growing a garden. We've got a lot of business interest. A lot of people have already said they're going to participate financially or in more... Like, for example, Prescott Area Association of Realtors is going to give us money, but they're also going to volunteer. And so that's real cool. The Prescott Lakes Gardening Club doesn't have a place to garden. We're going to sponsor one. Donations from citizens and... Do you have the hats and t-shirts? We've got some swag, if you will. Let's Get Growing with Prescott, with the t-shirts. We sold a bunch of these at Earth Day. Mayor Good, thank you so much for spending some time getting to know us that day. It was a lot of fun. It was a good event.
It was a happy...
Of course, can't have anything without the hat. You've got to shade the sun when you're out gardening. And so, anyway, we're going to be doing rental income if, you know, a local group wants to rent the place, and they're not open to the public, we're not open that time. We can make that happen. Special events, we want to have musical events, poetry, seminars on health and wellness. Membership, the CSA program, we're looking to do. We're looking, once we have produce, we want to give people an opportunity to pay a monthly fee for return for produce. So they get something, we get something. Our merchandise will be expanded. We're planning on having a little gardening, you know, pavilion. We could say a shed, okay. It sounds better when we say pavilion. And we'll have all types of, you know, tools to help people. We're not looking to compete with the other vendors. We may even have these supplied. I just want to say, Ken Lane and Waters has been supportive, and he said he's going to help us with this, whether that's giving us fruit trees, or giving us tools, or money, or a combination. He said he's in, and we're grateful for his guidance and his family history here. The educational classes are going to be mostly free. Where they get to be charged might be a four-week seminar series on the advanced stages of preserving food. This is a work in progress, if you will. And of course, we're going to have a little farm stand. And Kathy Yettman from the farmer's market, we have nothing but wanted to be synergistic with them, and I think we can. In fact, we'll probably be clients of their back end because we'll be selling some produce. So we think this is just an expansion of the tent of the gardening community. And so selling locally grown food is a great thing. We'll probably be at the farmer's market as a vendor as well. Okay, so what are we asking for? We're asking for the city to grant us a 10-year lease with a renewable 10 years, based on our performance, for a dollar a year. We will build, manage, and maintain the garden as a public resource. We will educate the community with ongoing free classes for all citizens. And we will have, as I said, some classes that will be more advanced, and those may be for charge. And this is a place where people come together. And one of the people that I met was an older gentleman, and he did a gardening class with kids. And he's like, they had nothing in common, until they got to growing food together, and they realized they had a lot more in common than they thought. Gardening is the only hobby that lasts a lifetime. Gardening is great for kids that go to school, they do better on aptitude tests, and it is the number-one hobby for people that are centenarians. So that's a pretty cool reason to do a garden. And so, anyway, we have a bunch of community supporters. This is just some, not all. And we basically, which is written up in Quad City Business News, and I'm very proud to have Anne Harrington on our board of the Make 100 Healthy Foundation, and she works with Quad City Business News. There's also another synergy, is that Anne was the lady who led up the Eden Bowl-a-thon that raised $15,000 for Eden, our support dog. So I'm very grateful to have such a cross-section of talented people because this is not about me, it's not about Marty, it's not about Nirvana. It's just about bringing the community together to do something that's good, that's sustainable, and that all our citizens can benefit from. I am one of the proudest persons in the world, being a resident, a citizen of Prescott. I tell everybody. I even got into real estate, so I really believe in it. The fact is, our outdoor amenities, thanks to Joe and everybody here, just amazing. This is just another addition, another resource that will give us more outdoor beauty and things to do. We really hope that people come here to go to the Food Forest to learn how to grow food from all over the country. It's mostly, you know, focused on our citizens, but, you know, a guy can dream a little. So let's take a look at the plan. This is a very, very concise layout that covers all the different gardening aspects. If you look to the upper right, that's where the entrance is right now. The buildings that are there are not there yet. They may be. You have my...
Right here.
We may, may, based on cost, put a 40-foot container or 20-foot containers and convert that into mini kiosks. It's been done a lot. It's a cost-effective way of doing it. We're going to do a cooking setup, and we're going to have that on a mobile, portable area. So if you look in, you come in, and you have in front of you a koi pond that we're going to put in there just to create some nice nature. And then we have an amphitheater right there with a stage that we're going to do our classes. And if you look to the lower right, that is phase two. That's October, November. We're going to build a 20-by-30, or excuse me, 30-by-40 greenhouse that will be able to be sustainable all year long. That's where we're going to hold classes. That's where we're going to do the hydroponics. I'd like to just show the council a good idea of what our phase one will look like. These are 13 feet high, and they grow food every 23 days. This is what's going to sustain us. The pumpkin patch is going to be a great seasonal event. But, you know, once you get into November, December, that space is getting ready for the next year. The raised beds, we have already had an agreement with YEI Industries to get some of their gardening boxes and their beds. He was going to donate them, but he's going to do it at cost because he said, "Redwood doesn't grow on trees." That's Brad Newman for you. And so we're going to start off, I think, if you approve us in the next meeting, we're going to start off with a dozen, a dozen community beds. We're going to sell each one of those to a local sponsor. We may just give them to our citizens for the first year, just to get it going, or we might ask for a nominal fee. And the reason I want to do that is not for I care about the $50 or $75 or whatever it is. Everybody should have some skin in the game. You know, if you're going to get something, we want you to have a little skin in the game. It's going to go to a good cause, anyway. To the lower left-hand corner, that is our in-ground garden. Leroy Miller, who's the master gardener, has about a 40-by-40 garden in his backyard. Don't tell the Prescott Lakes HOA. Anyway, he got it approved. But anyway, we're going to have a root garden. That's going to be potatoes and watermelons and, you know, zucchini. It's going to be real nice, and it's going to be demonstrative. It's going to be for people to learn how to garden in ground. The part that I kind of like the best of this whole thing is, upper left-hand corner is an edible healing garden. And you can't really see it too well in this drawing, but there is a dirt path. And that dirt path is going to be compacted nutritious dirt. One of the things they say that our society has become cold to is the feeling of your skin on the earth. Walking through a dirt path full of nutrients is invigorating, it gets you in touch with the world and the earth. People that have lost relatives, people that are going through a tough time, this is going to be a very tranquil, peaceful place. We're going to have lavender. Ken and I have spoken about fruit trees there. And so you have a little bit of everything in a small amount of space that's totally contained, and we feel very confident that we can implement this plan and sustain it and have it grow and be a great part of Prescott's outdoor amenities. And I think that's about what we have for your consideration. I do have detailed financials. Not really detailed, but I have a pro forma financials, and we have a big support list. And we just, we ask you to bless this project and to let us get started. As Joe knows, we've been stopping, we've been holding back at the gate, so...
Well, thank you, John, for your very enthusiastic presentation.
Thank you.
It's pretty obvious you were a DJ. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for John and his team?
No, it sounds like there's a lot of community support. Oh, I'm sorry.
Buttons here.
Oh, I forgot.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm very supportive of the concept of a community garden, but I have had a lot of email communication from citizens in the community regarding the location. And as you've probably aware, some people have advocated for maybe moving it to the location of the rodeo grounds. I was wondering if this is something you've considered for all of the reasons that they've explained, as far as the proximity to the composting, proximity to the farmer's market, proximity to Prescott College, proximity to high school, elementary schools. There's a lot of reasons why it would seem like that would be a really good location to have a community garden next to the University of Arizona Extension Office, the Master Gardener Program. There's just so many win-win-win, I think, reasons to have it more centrally located, in my opinion. Your thoughts on that initially?
Well, my thoughts are that I don't believe that that land is available to do anything like that, and that there is not a fenced-in area. And I think as we migrate northward in our population, I think this might be centrally located. We have no negativity with doing something downtown. I have not been consulted or talked about, other than the emails that you got. And it's like, you know, the bottom of the ninth inning with a three and two count. Somebody's coming up with a different idea. This is a well-thought-out plan in a spot that was recommended by the Parks and Rec, and I think that you blessing this project could lead to that happening. I don't think it's the same project. I don't think that it... I think if we take a step back and try to mull that one over, we're going to lose another year. And honestly, I don't think there's any reason not to go forward this program, but maybe Prescott Farmer's Market and maybe some of the folks at the Master Gardeners Program can do that. Wouldn't it be great to have two locations? We're looking at two libraries. We're looking at expansion. So I have nothing against that program. Joe might have a little more to add on that.
Mayor, if I can speak to that a little bit. So the previous garden, before it was established in 2011, had looked at the rodeo grounds. I didn't do a lot of research on it, but from what I saw, it said that the site wasn't suitable. There was a lot of utilities in there. I will say that, is that the highest and best use for the rodeo grounds property as we're going through a master plan for the rodeo grounds right now? That's a decision that you guys make. That's a decision that you guys make. And I do agree with John. I think that there's probably opportunity for more than, more than one. There could be one downtown. The great thing about the downtown location is I think it, the lower income demographic would have a much easier time getting to that spot.
I agree.
But I think, again, there, there could be two. And, and John's correct, obviously, our growth is up north, so it's located pretty well. And, and John, I think brushed on it a little bit, but in the 1999 Willow and Watson Lake Master Plans, this very spot was identified as a future community garden back then.
And certainly, I'm not trying to throw a wrench into your plans. I'm just asking the question because several constituents have emailed and, and raised these issues. And I realize it's late in the game, but this is the first time I learned about this project. I never knew about this project until I read my agenda packet this past week.
Yeah, no, I understand.
About this proposal. So I'm not trying to stall it or delay it in any way. I'm just saying, this is the first time I'm hearing about it. And I'm getting emails from people, you know, questioning the location. So I feel like it should be a topic of discussion because that's our responsibility as council members to represent our constituents.
And I meant no disrespect to...
Oh, you're fine.
The, the point I'm trying to make, we are open, we want to be an olive branch to the entire growing community and the people in schools and, and the farmer's market and the compost program. I interviewed the assistant compost manager to be our garden manager. So I see us as, you know, brethren in, in creating opportunities to people to grow food. I don't think it is limited to either location, but this location, we have everything set to what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, you know? It's well thought out. The other one, to me, is early concept. And that doesn't mean it's not valid at all. Just doesn't mean, I just don't really have enough information or from when I talk with Joe that, you know, that area is a growth area that, you know, they want to do a lot of things. Maybe a community garden might not be the, the main focus over there. That's what I kind of understood. But we want to do this. We want to do it well. And, and if that's the location that's chosen, we'll certainly adapt to that. But it doesn't seem to me that this space that's already in the master, the Lakes Master Plan, it's fenced in. We have a willing participant in Joe to relocate some of the, of the Parks and Rec services. Water's there, electric's there. It's, it's really a, a perfect location to do something like this that is not too massive. Maybe the one downtown could be massive. We, we know that, yeah, we know that Embry-Riddle owns the land north of where the garden is on Heritage Park there. We're talking about a countywide farm. Wow, that would be great. But we got to prove ourselves first. And this is something manageable and something that I think touches on all the different aspects of growing that I think our citizens will benefit from.
I guess, I guess one contention is that I don't see the clientele, if that's the right word, for Embry-Riddle, the type of students and the type of programs they have are, are the type of people that would be using a community garden compared to like Prescott College as far as the students and the, you know, the demographics, the programs that they offer, you know, cyber intelligence or cybersecurity or ROTC, you know, versus Prescott College, which is more earth sciences and it's more, more close. I just, I'm seeing, you know, that perhaps there are, there's value in this other location that we should consider. I realize you've probably gone down this road pretty far, but like I said, I didn't know about it until this past week.
That's fine. Just to let you know, Embry-Riddle has already, we've had conversations about this being part of their serviced hours that they give back to the community. And there's a, a great groundswell of support that they will get involved also. Yavapai College, Edwin Bushman is a business, I don't know if he's a dean there, but he's pretty high up. Him and his wife are getting involved. So the fact is, we have support within all the little, when I say little, the charter schools and the specialty schools all want to be part of this too. So I, I have nothing against the property downtown. I just don't have any information that that is feasible to do and to do it the way we foresee it. So, I mean, we'd love to get this started and maybe collaborate with them down there. We're not asking the city for any money. So it's, we're asking for the opportunity to have the space and grow it and give it back to the city. So that might help ease the, you know, the, the trepidation.
I do have one other question, if you don't mind, Mayor. As, as I read through the material, I didn't see anything about, would, would the location be metered and would they be paying water rates to the city for the water that they use at that location? I didn't see any information about the water use and how that would be paid for, who would be paying for that.
Councilman Moore, that would be something that we would put in if we bring, if you guys want us to bring back a lease or a license agreement to you that would be addressed. It is currently metered. The meter is in the city's name at this point in time.
We, we would be hopeful that the city would include that as it is a city metered program. And we're going to be putting in hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements on the property of city land.
Yeah, it's just a question I had because I didn't see.
It's not a deal breaker, right? But it would be good if we could do that. So we're going to ask for it. Whether that is something that is, you know, approved, that's up to you.
I do have material, additional material I'd like to share with you, probably not in this setting, because I don't want to monopolize the time.
Okay, sure.
But I do have some additional comments and, and questions that I would love to share with you about the plan.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Broten.
Will that involve some bird feeders?
No. They've already, they've already planned that with a koi pond. That was one of my comments. You probably don't want a koi pond there. There are great blue herons and great egrets all around that location. I've tried to have them fish in my little pond in my yard off of Rossar and they always disappear. And if you think you can have a koi pond right next to Willow Lake, they will disappear.
Well, that's, well, that's something that we may reconsider. Stephanie's idea to try to create...
Yeah, it's not a good idea, not next to a lake.
Oh, I would just like to say, I think this is a wonderful idea. I support it. This is what Prescott is all about, community and quality of life. And the only question I have is to make sure that you have, how we're going to work the insurance. Are they going to be carrying a separate policy, business owner liability?
Yes, we are.
Yes, they'll, they'll have to name us additionally insured and provide us...
And we have, right now, we're looking at $2 million insurance, liability and director insurance. It's, it's not very expensive. I think the $2 million liability was like $800 the first year. And so it's not really, but we have it ready to go. We just haven't done it because why pay for insurance for something we don't have?
Well, thank you. That was a very impressive presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Broten.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, John.
Hello, Brad.
I have a few questions for you. Did you, in, in your process for constructing this, this project, did you guys do a needs assessment around where this type of project would best be suited in Prescott? I mean, I understand that it was planned to the Prescott Lakes Master Plan, but I, I kind of want to echo a little bit of what Eric was saying. I think from the research I did prior to this meeting, one of the things that I understood as being important in community gardens that have been successful in other communities is that they do a needs assessment to establish where the greatest need is. Now, I'm not pretending that I know where that is or that this location isn't, but I'm just curious if you've done that work to understand that need.
Well, we, we have done our work in the sense that we see the population growing north. Willow Creek Road is a very highly-traveled road. You have recreation facilities there. You have the zoo there. You have the college there. We have Prescott Lakes. We have pinyon oaks. There's a lot of citizenship up there. You know, I don't want to say that the community garden in the city can't work, but the one that failed was downtown. So, and, and there was, you know, I think the lower income folks, we, we can work a, a program that we actually could maybe provide transportation for them to come. And we, we don't want to exclude anybody. The lower, the lower demographic group as far as financially, they need the food more than anybody. But there are food banks for that. This is not really going to feed the world. It's going to educate the world on how they can feed themselves. And that's really why I think it's a, a great location. So as far as a needs assessment, we've worked with, with Joe for about a year now. And we had the facility over at Prescott Dirt. And we were going to do that, but then I think there was, you know, it wasn't really meant to be. This, Joe said, oh my God, it's already zoned, it's already fenced in, there's water, there's a lot. It's, it's, it's a low-hanging fruit. So, pardon the pun.
No, 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 that's fair. Joe, I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I've been out to the composting site, but that is fenced in, yes?
It is.
Okay, I just want to clarify that from my own knowledge. The other question I had for you, and again, I would kind of echo what Councilman Moore said a little bit. I, I think it's, it's a good location. It's a high-traveled road. It doesn't strike me as walkable, which is a thing that I've seen called out in some of the other research I've done. So that would just be another kind of issue that I, I kind of would point out. With regards to the lease term that you're talking about, a dollar per year for a 10-year commitment, I do have some concerns. And I'm looking at our city attorney right now regarding that. And I, I don't know if you want to, if you, you saw my email, I think.
Yeah, potential gift clause violation.
Yes.
Right. So the Arizona Constitution has an anti-gift clause section in it. It basically says the city cannot use taxpayer funds to gift or donate or lend its credit to a person, an association, or a corporation. Doesn't make any distinctions between, you know, nonprofits or for-profit corporations. And last year, and this is a really new case, a case called Shire's came down. And it, it assessed a potential gift clause violation from the city of Peoria to a for-profit college. And it came up with a two-part test that you have to prove an existence of a public purpose, which is easy in your case, right?
Thank you.
The hard part, and where everyone's getting tripped up on, is the adequacy of consideration. So the city has to get a direct benefit out of any agreement that it, it enters into. And direct benefits are considered things like fair market value for the, the property. What, what would a reasonable rent really be versus a dollar? I'm just looking at...
Didn't Yavapai County do one recently with Center for the Future, essentially?
They did.
And they were, theirs was, I think, if I'm not mistaken, they were offering X number of classes on cybersecurity stuff to citizens of the county as a benefit. So it's just, and I'm not trying to torpedo your plan at all by bringing this up. It's just, to me, as, as we move forward with this new legal information that has been, as Matt noted, relatively new, I think we need to tread lightly to make sure that we're staying within the lane of what's legally appropriate. And, and we are stewards of making sure that we uphold the Arizona Constitution on this diet. So it's something that I'm aware of and something that would enter into my consideration around this. I'm sure there's a, there's a workaround potentially, but it's just something that caught my attention. In the presentation materials that were in the agenda, I was looking at the financials that you had. I noticed that you called out $12,000 a year per the, for the manager of the garden. Is that correct?
I believe, yeah, 1,200 a month. So it's more than that.
Okay, so a bit more than that.
14,000.
Okay, so I guess my question to you on that is, do you think that's a reasonable wage to employ someone to do what might be a, a lot of work in that ongoing position as time goes on?
Well, there's a, a job description for AmeriCorps that pays 1325 an hour. And it's part of their credits to become certified in what they do. So we're, we're not saying this is a living wage type situation for somebody supporting a family, but somebody looking to get into the horticultural, the agricultural business, this is a great opportunity to put a feather in their cap. So we do, just taking a step back for a second. I'm familiar a little bit with the Shire's case. And I, you know, I think, I think half of our nonprofits in the city might be vulnerable.
Oh, I agree. I would, I would completely agree, by the way.
I think it's, again, I think it's an apples and oranges comparison, trying to stay away from fruit and vegetables. But I, I think we'd be okay. And I, I think, Joe, you had mentioned to me that you thought that this was something that we would be pretty solid to defend.
I'm, I'm not an attorney. I, I would say that it would be, have to be contemplated in the agreement on what that might be.
So one, one of the things we can consider as a direct benefit would be the improvements to the municipal property. That has value. And that, when we write a lease or a license agreement, we always retain the improvements at the end of the lease or license term. So that's something we would be looking at. The classes that you'd be giving out have value, all right? Things like that. So we're just going to have to maybe put our heads together, so.
We want this to be win-win for everybody. Just, you know, the more that we would pay for the land, the least we can put into the resources. So it's kind of like, we're trying, help us, help you, help us.
Right, right. And then again, I'm, I'm with Eric. I don't want to monopolize the time up here with your presentation and asking questions. I know there are others behind me. Do you have any idea of how much water you would use on this property for this project?
Leroy, you have anything on that? We don't have a specific number.
And to clarify something you said earlier, you're looking for us to grant you, to continue to pay for the water. Is that, is that what I heard you?
That would be our, that would be our ask. Our ask, yes.
Okay.
And, you know, just again, with the greenhouse, I, I know that we're going to be using 10% of the water that we would for traditional gardening. That's not an exact number. We will do, and for the, we will have an answer for, you know, estimated water based on the space and, and the drip systems that we're going to put in, so.
Okay. But John, thank you. I, I think, again, one thing that comes across very clearly is your passion for this project. It sounds like there's some details that need to be kind of knitted out and sussed out a little bit more. But I, I think that, that there's a, a great potential for a community garden here. So thank you for coming and speaking today.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
Councilman Shishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that. John, good to see you.
You too, sir.
Everybody, thanks for coming in. This is awesome. Love to see community support. You know, I have a real problem with the folks who've come in at the last hour and said, oh gee, if we don't do it our way, we're going to take our marbles and go home. I have a real problem with that. I, I think that the attitude of let's work together is not there and it should be. But I also think that the location thing, A, the farmer's market used to be at Yavapai College. So all of a sudden, do we reposition the food forest so that it can be close to Yavapai or close to farmer's market, wherever they may reposition in the future? I think that, that we need to settle on one spot, make that spot successful. And if we want to expand to an area closer to, and I hate to use the word disadvantaged neighborhood, just because you don't have a Tesla parked out in front of your house doesn't mean you're disadvantaged. And, you know, I, I just think that we need to start somewhere. This is a great place to start. I think we need to get with it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? I would like to ask myself, for myself, that the planning for high-velocity monsoon impact for your garden areas, for your greenhouse, et cetera, has to be strongly considered. And I'd certainly like to see some rainwater harvesting included in this, so you can be a, almost an example of how best to use that rainwater for raised bed gardening and other effective uses of water without having to necessarily tap into potable water lines. And I think that's also of a concern if your water costs don't, don't cost you anything, then there's lack of, or potential lack of consideration of making sure that water use is as efficient as possible, so you don't have to pay for a growing water bill. And of course, you also have concerns about breaking of your drip irrigation systems. I know when I have a pretty consistent water bill and all of a sudden I saw a pretty big increase on that, and I went, what the heck's going on? And it took some digging and looking to find out that there was a, a crack in one of the PVC lines. I went to the main drip irrigation system and it was about three feet deep. We found it because I didn't want to pay that bill. And that's an example of how, when you have true skin in the game for that precious resource, you manage it a little bit better. Any other comments? Did you have another comment? Shishka, no?
No, Mayor, I'm good.
All right. Well, we certainly appreciate your presentation and I think it's a exciting program for the community. It would be nice to have a community garden that is restored as part of the many benefits that we provide the local citizens. And we wish you good luck in getting this established and, and being able to show a large community benefit, especially as we continue to grow in northern Prescott and becomes more of a... as we continue to grow in northern Prescott and becomes more of a centralized location than it is today. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Council members, thank you so much for your consideration. As far as the water goes, we're going to be stewards of that. Whether we're paying for it or not, we're going to make sure that it's done efficiently. Rainwater is part of our plan, but we don't have any buildings yet. So there's, we have to, we can, you know, we have to, we have to kind of work that out organically as we grow. And thank you for your comments on the koi pond. I-
Mayor, can I ask you another question? John, are you considering a cistern?
We may do that, yes. We really don't have our hands deep into the methodology. A cistern would be a great thing to do. Where we have storage there, that's what we could do with the rainwater. So I think they go hand in hand.
Okay.
We want to be as economical as we can and ecologically friendly. That's what we're doing here. That's, so, you know, that we're going to be very, very careful of the resources we use, of nature's resources, whether we're paying for it or not. So thank you so much for your consideration. And on behalf of the whole team here, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So our next presentation will be on discussing the city website.
Can we grab a handful of that?
Can you hear about puppies?
Puppies and kittens, the boxes of puppies and kittens.
Oh, that's what it says, regular puppies and kittens.
Yeah.
You don't ground them.
Good afternoon.
And then we got hamsters.
I can't compete with that, so during the meeting.
Go try.
So I'm Nate Keegan. I'm the IT Director. I have like 20, 22 slides. If you're interested in me going through all the slides, I'd be happy to do that. If you get to a point where you don't want to see slides, you want me to shut up, I'm fine with that, too. But one of the nice things about study session, of course, is dialogue. So questions, comments, concerns, I want to hear it all. And this first slide might actually be, I'm not Johnny Artist, but a really good metaphor for websites, which is that everybody knows what a paper airplane is. Almost everybody, I think, has built paper airplanes. And a lot of people think, deep down, they know the secrets to making a really good, successful paper airplane. I don't think there is like a magical formula to do so. And that's how websites get built, is everybody has an idea, because they've used websites, they've seen websites of what a website should do. But they're completely abstract, right? You turn off the electricity, there is no website. Complete opposite of community garden, where it's very, very organic, very based in the real world. Websites is like chasing a shadow, really, when you get down to it. So that brings us to, I guess the next slide is, there's a website out there called the Wayback Machine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And what it's good for is you can go back and see something back, in this case, 1996. This was the city of Prescott's first website. What's interesting about that, A, I was working in IT, not here at the time, but I was in IT at the time, so I've seen a lot of progression in technology. But a lot of the same themes, if you go through the city's five or six iterations of our website, are present in this first website, which is community outreach, education, trying to get information out to the community, and how do you do that? And what was interesting to me is a lot of the same, I wouldn't call them sins, but a lot of the same tendencies have been baked into every single iteration of our website. And not just the city of Prescott, it's true of other government websites, because government's kind of a weird animal, right? Like, on one hand, government has to cover lots of ground, really deep. We have a lot of stories to tell. But that's our biggest weakness. We have a lot of stories to tell. And how do you end up with that not being 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag? And to the public, it's never going to feel like the thing I want, the thing I'm looking for. It's just stuff and fluff. And that's the challenge, I think, is trying to break through that. And one question might be, who are we on the internet? I was surprised that we actually own 63 internet domains, names. Almost all of those point to a handful of websites, which our core websites would be Prescott Easy Gov, Fly Prescott, which is the airport, Prescott Library Info, which is Prescott Public Library, and Visit Prescott, which is our tourism site. So we have a lot of domains. We have a lot of different identities on the internet. And some of those sites, like preskottdogpark.com, actually end up on a page on the Prescott Easy Gov website, which is much easier than preskottgov-slash-something-slash-something. I can remember Prescott Dog Park. Boom, there it is. But to do anything with a website, to get away from this idea of a nebulous, on one hand, you don't want to have the website built by everybody, which pleases nobody. You don't really want a website that's done by the benevolent dictator, because then you get that person's decisions, good or for ill. So you got to have instruments to take measurements. I don't think that's a shocker, but that still applies even to IT stuff. You can't just run off, like, we're going to do a website. What is it going to be? I don't know, but somebody get the art and craft supplies, here we go. You go get some coffee, we're going to do a bunch of coding all night. That's not quite how it works. It's a good idea. It's a cool visual, but it's asking for disaster. It doesn't help that government sites are not always the best designed, partly because government has lots of narratives, lots of stories. But government sites in particular tend to commit a lot of the same kinds of sins. And I'm not going to say that we don't, at times on our own site, because that would be kind of dishonest. A lot of times, government websites will beat you over the head with, here's the organization. If you want to get to the dog department to catch dogs, you got to figure out, is under the police department? Chief Bonnie's here? Is it under this department, that department? I don't know. At some point, I just want to find what I need from the city of Prescott, right?
Yep.
So that's a very common government, even a very nice-looking government site. Say, a government to our east somewhere.
[laughing]
Looks very, very placid, front page. Sooner or later, on a lot of government sites, you get wham, bonk over the head, here's our organizational structure. And then it's usually a huge menu of stuff, and stuff, and stuff. Hard to avoid. You don't want people to have to figure out your organizational structure. They don't care. They want what they want, and they want to get out. And a lot of sites, government sites, commit what I'd consider information sin. So that retro skiing picture, there's a fine line between content that is nostalgic, interesting, because it's rooted in history, and it's just old and not useful and outdated. And likewise, if the chicken thing, if you can't find the content you want, then it might as well not exist, right? And then what do people do? They call the city of Prescott. And these two things go hand in hand. Websites, phones, phones, website. Ring, ring, hey, I want to get a blah, 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 blah. They transfer you around. The person's getting madder and madder. If you're really unlucky and you call a business, hey, have you gone on our website? Yes, I was on the website. That's how I ended up here. I can't find what I want. And by the time they get to a human being, they're not happy. So we want to avoid that.
Yep.
And then the last graphic there is that it doesn't do you any good if I want to interact with the government. And I'm looking for a building permit form, let's say. But it's not called a building permit form. It's like a Form 132C, blue, left-handed widget-spannered thing. And there's no way I can find it, right? And that's how people get bent out of shape. Which leads to language. In some jurisdictions, the website actually has to be in different languages within the area. For example, in San Francisco, they have three or four different versions of their website based on actual language. But the other part of that is the bottom-left corner there, where the language of bureaucracy, the language of government can permeate government websites. And it's not necessarily how individuals, citizens, visitors really talk. So it's a struggle with government sites in particular to avoid the heavy-handed feeling bureaucratic, this is the government, bonk, 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 to match up with the way people really talk, the way they would describe things, and the way that they would actually think of things. It's a hard thing to do, but it's very important, I think, in a government website to avoid this kind of ivory tower of government speak, government for the government. You have to kind of find a bridge there between. It's very abstract, but if you go look around at a lot of government websites, you'll see things where the language used in forms, the instructions, even when you find something, it's not clear what it is you're looking at because of the language used. And then you have data, right? A good example here would be, I want to download the magic form that I found, and it's in like a Microsoft Word format. Now I got to go find some other piece of software. Now I'm on a phone, and that's a bit of a hassle to do that, versus I just want to look at the information and get out and go on with my life. Government websites aren't necessarily created for people to pull up a couch or a chair and hang out. We're not selling widgets. What we are is a transactional website. You need something, I give it to Michael. He goes off and does his business. Next person comes to Matt, he says, hey, I need this. He finds it, he goes on his way. Government sites tend to lock up data, not necessarily on purpose, but it's the same net effect, right? Lock up data so that it's not easily accessible, it's not easily found, and it's a pain in the butt, basically, for the citizens to deal with. I'm here, I want to do something, and now it feels like I had to jump through a hoop, and a hoop, and a hoop. And it turns out, if I get the wrong thing, back at square one, hoop, hoop, hoop. You get the point. We don't use a lot of links on our website. One of the downsides of links on websites is that they go out of date, or they don't work. I would say one of the things about our website, which can be a challenge, is that there aren't links for things that you might think should be easily found. A good example was last council meeting. There was an issue with the technicality of broadcasting the meeting, and I wanted to see what Sarah was seeing, so I was looking for the link to view the stream. I know where it is if I'm inside the city of Prescott's network, but I was on our website, like, hey, web developer, where the hell is the link to watch the videos? Because it should be more prominent. Easy thing that's overlooked, but that's how it happens. So what's the point? You got some nifty graphics. The point is, we're going to take a data-driven approach to how people use the current website. And we're going to learn from some of the mistakes, I think, that we've, not just us, but governments make on websites, trying to be everything to everybody, and try to flip that. But you got to start somewhere. Current website is 322 pages. That's a lot. 322 anything is a lot to try to manage and wrangle. Some people would say kittens and puppies would be a lot to wrangle for that many, but it's a lot.
How many people would say that?
Some people.
I've never heard it said.
And you have custom applications. A good example there would be, I want to report a pothole. We have a fairly nifty thing where you can find it by a Google map. You can put in as an address. Burn permits would count as a custom application, which we do for all of Yavapai County. So it's something that is, it's just two facts about our current site. I thought this was interesting, that as of last year calendar, only about 18% of people actually visit the homepage on our website. Everybody else is doing a Google search primarily, city of Prescott, payment water bill. Boom, they enter the site. And you see here, top five pages. So people are looking for the most common. And that kind of extends the search. If you go to some government websites, I think Chandler's like this, the homepage is pretty much, looks like a mini copy of Google. They want you to search. Maybe their data is different than ours, but in our website, only 2% of people are searching. Question, is that because they find what they want, or is it because they're giving up, and this, or the search doesn't give them what they're looking for, right? I could search, but if the search doesn't yield the right thing, or it gives me everything in the world except for what I'm looking for, people tend to kind of forget it. I'm not going to do it now. I could search the city of Prescott website later. I'll just do it through Google.
Councilman Montoya.
Nate, hi. Sorry. I appreciated a lot of your presentation thus far. I would say, in my experience of using the city of Prescott, both as just run-of-the-mill, everyday citizen, and now in my current role as a city council member, I think we may be discounting people who give up on searching, based on my personal anecdotal experience, which is, sometimes when I search things that seem like they should be relatively obvious to find, they're not as easy as I think they would be. And I, the example, I know I sent you an email with some examples, but, but my thought is, I know when we were doing the Centennial Center naming process, I was looking to look at some of the letters that were brought into that issue. And it was not intuitive for me to find the letters. I tried a lot of different things. And in the process, I was searching Kirkendall at one point, who was a mayor of the city not that long ago. And I couldn't even, like, I ran into a brick wall at a certain point where I was just like, well, I guess these aren't that important for me to look at at this moment. So I guess a gentle criticism or feedback would be that I don't know what the mechanism is for our search capacity within our website now, but if we could improve it, that would sure make the lives of, I think, the citizen at large and some members of this dais a lot easier.
That is definitely on the top punch list to do. And the challenge, I think, with the current website, and it has to do with design decisions and decisions of what was important at the time or over the years. But what's, what's important now, I think, is that if somebody's searching, they may or may not be searching because they can't find it. They may be searching because they're in a hurry. So you got to account for that, right? You can't just be like, the bottom, look for here, go here, do here, do. Last thing you should do is search. That's one train of thought. Alternate train of thought is, if I'm going to search, we have analytics. What are people searching for? And try to figure out and give them not, I want to be complete, so I'm going to give you everything possible, except for the thing you're looking for. Strip it down, tailor it. And I'm getting to this in a slide here. You may or may not be shocked that people tend to search for a lot of the same things. You got some oddballs that search for just really esoteric stuff, and that's a different consideration. But if somebody's searching a lot for, say, Kirkendall, Centennial Center address, you can actually package that up in the website, so that those things that come together give you a nice, clean, I guess, like, I'm trying to think of a good food analogy, a buffet of things that you actually care about more than likely, and not like, hey, 20 years ago, this name showed up here. 14 years ago, here's a weird document that the name showed up in. Like, give me something relevant so that the search pays off. Otherwise, I think what happens, like, going to a slot machine. If it ever pays off, I'm probably not going to keep dumping money into it. I'm just going to go somewhere else. And that could be why you see a low amount of search, is maybe people find what they're looking for. Maybe that slot machine doesn't pay off enough, so they just don't do it.
Right.
Which gets to kind of the methodology part of this, which is, how are we going to do this, right? It's all cool talk. It sounds amazing, but talk's cheap.
Stevie, you had a question?
Yeah, I do, Mayor. You know, Nate, way back in 1993, when they were just coming out with PCs, and somebody said, well, you need a Windows PC. And we're sitting there scratching our heads going, okay, I guess if we need it, we need it. And we got one, and it had four megabytes of RAM, and that was a lot, back in 1993. And we're looking at this thing going, okay, we've got one. What do we do with it now? And so what I'm saying to you is, okay, so we've got this website. What is the most appropriate thing to do with the website? Do we need an app? Do we have a city or Prescott app that somebody could just pop on and, you know, we can, we can have on the app the five or six things that people always ask about, so that they can get there quickly? I know that from my own, if I don't get somewhere on a website in about six seconds, I'm out of there. So how do we make it, if we're going to do this, how do we make it relevant?
I got a couple thoughts on that, and I agree with you. One way is, we have a lot of content. And this kind of ties, this is a, Pareto's an Italian economist, I think it was in the 19th century, came up with this idea, and I don't think he's the only one. Like, 80% of something is related to 20% of something else. So on the case of a website, 80% of your visitors are hitting 20% of your stuff. The other 80% of your stuff are one-offs. They're important at a certain time of year, but that's where you start, from a design, from a focus, from a filter, is what are people really want? And if I slide back a slide, this bottom-left thing is a, it's a printer connection, the I/O. Call me crazy, but I think from a government website, it's a transactional website. You come to us, we give you what you need. You go on, do something else. The next person comes in, we give them what they want, they leave. Boom, 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 boom. If we're not doing that, we're wasting people's time. The trick there is, we got to figure out, what are we doing well? I think we know that. What are we doing pretty sucky job at? I think we know that pretty well, because we have analytics. How do we, what strategies do we use to deal with that? One would be- One would be less stuff, right? Less to sort through, less to organize, less to make searchable. You just strip it down. And that's driven by what are people looking at? Having people tell us what do they want from us on the web that we're not providing? Crazy, right? And this top-right thing, it's supposed to be an explosion or a big bang. So the traditional way you do websites is, it's like launching a ship. You start it, you build, you build, you build, you build, you build, you launch it. At the end of that build, you find out, were we totally off-base? And then usually, hooray, or all hell breaks loose. That's dumb. It's very risky, and it's very time-consuming. What I'm advocating, to address your point, is we start making changes now, we already have, and then you collect feedback. You do like a Coke Pepsi-type thing. Michael visits the website, he gets version A. Matt goes, he gets version B. Councilman Moore gets version A. And you have them fill out, do you like this? No, I hate it. Nobody likes version A, so version B is a better setup. You're getting real feedback from people, not relying on staff, right? Because staff is a dangerous thing to rely on for a government website, because they know the things they know. They know how to navigate and find the thing they care about, but they're not looking at it from the necessarily citizen's perspective, right? Different kinda transaction. We have tools for staff to use for an inward-focused website. We want this to be strictly public, driven by services. That might be an app. Most people visit our website on mobile devices, phones, tablets, that kinda thing. And you, to me, you strip it down to, if it's on the website, it's on the website because people are looking for it, they're asking for it, and they care about it. If it's not those things, maybe it gets sent to a farm upstate where it can hang out with other things that might have a use on a website, but you don't clutter the whole thing up with 300-something things. It's like having a curio cabinet with 300 things in it. At some point, it's gonna be a lot of maintenance to keep those things dusted and organized and looking nice. Why not strip that down to like, here's the 60 things, the 80/20 thing, the 60 things people really care about? And then we'll figure out what to do with the other things that don't fit in a neat little box. Does that make sense? Good, well, it's with government, but the city of Prescott, since I've been here the longest of places I've worked in IT. You got the thing, on paper, we got 60 websites, right? Pages, things. What do we do with them? It used to be, if you go all the way back in the day, the main purpose of the city website was like a newsletter. It was inform the citizenry of what we're doing. Well, social media's taken a lot of that mission. It's faster, it's people are used to it. And I'm saying social media doesn't have a lot of ills, but if you wanna put out something that's like, hey, there's a plane crash, social media's where most people are gonna go to find that. And the city website would kinda push you that way. What you don't wanna have, I think, is like the city website is trying to recreate some of those things. You let this be done over here, we're clear about this is done over here, and then you make sure that people that come in either door can get where they need to go without having to whip out a Rosetta Stone and figure out what it is we had in mind. I think that's the downside of a lot of government sites, is you gotta kinda figure it out. Risky.
I got a couple of comments, Nate. Is there a, kind of a national ranking of government websites where certain websites are just recognized by their community as so effective and easy to use, that we might be able to use that as a template rather than continuing to modify our current website? Maybe it's time to kinda chuck it and, and take what really, really works well, and then be able to adapt it.
There is. Not necessarily a formal ranking, but we're on a web platform called WordPress. WordPress has like two big advantages, and it's not like unique to the city, tons of people use it. One, anybody who has permission can post web content without tanking the website. You don't require special web developer skills to do so. It's very a democratic thing. Yay. Because of that, WordPress allows you to take the way a site looks, what a lot of people see as the website, and separate that from the underlying stuff. So it's pretty easy, actually, to make a WordPress website look completely different. That's one level of approach, is just make the website look different. And there's a lot of examples of nice-looking government websites. I think that's only gonna get you so far, even though a lot of people see fresh new coat of paint, and they're like, oh, hey, city of Prescott updated the website, hooray. I think that a deeper level dive is to look at some of the structural elements of our website. How much content do we have? Is it easy to search for stuff? Do you force people to navigate through to find it? And if you look up on the screen, if you wanna look, city of San Francisco has a very minimal-driven website. It is very linear. You get like, I'll show you. It's easier to show than talk about it. This is modeled after the UK federal government has, they're like the most extreme version of this, but it's very drill-in. Not pictures, not dancing kittens, not stuff like that, not fluff, just get in, drill in, get what you need, get out. That's one, that's one example, one extreme, I guess you will. Intermediate one would be Denver, San Diego, both considered to be very good government websites. I would consider them an in-betweener, and what I mean by that is they're less graphically-driven than the extremes, but they're a little more graphically-rich than what San Francisco's doing. A lot of similarities to our website in some ways, right? There's only so many ways to do a website. But Denver and San Diego are considered good government websites, and they're looking for kind of a good blend between visuals, especially on a mobile, right? Adopt a pet, people wouldn't know what this is. It looked nice on a mobile. And maybe not quite as aggressive about the drill-in more textile that San Francisco does, even though it's very effective. So it's probably a good middle ground for us. And then, I would suspect we're gonna end up pretty similar to Boise's website. Nice-looking website, not totally alien to what we do, but more polished, I think, visually. But that's not all the website is. I mean, it's what people see, right? But it's not necessarily the experience they're gonna take. I could go to a website, I could think of one estate east of here. Visually, very nice-looking, till you leave the front page and it's a hot mess. It's just, I, I, I think I know what they were going for, and that kinda leads to wrap it up here and take your questions. It's finding the balance. What is the right balance for us, for Prescott, for the people who use our site? To avoid that becoming a one-person echo chamber, I think it's important to approach it from a, you got a web developer. We have one, very good technically. He's not a graphic designer. I'm certainly not a graphic designer. You need somebody who has a visual understanding of visual language elements. I think that's super important. It's not really something we've done before, and I think it shows in some ways, right? So you make, we don't wanna go too far, like this other nameless city, where it's maybe graphic designers gone wild, but the site's not terribly usable. Or you find the ragged edges of that site as soon as you start kinda wandering, and you have to wander because of the choices they made, and you get lost. So we've been doing a ton of discussion in IT and elsewhere about, if we were gonna, what's a good government website? And it's easier to find bad government websites than good government websites. But a lot of the good government websites, Boise, Denver, San Francisco, have common elements. We wanna take those good elements, mix them with what's good about our website, and then do some deeper-level streamlining of the website, so we don't just throw some paint on here and call it a day, and I'll see you in a couple years and we do it again. Like, we wanna do it more frequently. But I think part of our challenge is we just have a lot of stuff, and the data suggests that most people aren't looking at most of that stuff. We gotta strip it down to what they do look at, make that polished, and what's missing? If that makes sense. Do you have questions? Does that make sense to you?
Well, I would personally always vote for function over form, and then if you could pretty it up a little bit, that's a bonus. But being able to find what you need in a reasonably rapid manner, and I think three or four clicks is about the limit. If you can't get to what you're looking for after that, you're gonna give up.
I would agree.
And get on the phone, and then burden the staff with having someone describe for you how you need to navigate the website to get where you need. I also think our keyword lookup is very, very inefficient. You put in what you think is the closest description of what you're looking for, and it's really infrequent that you actually end up finding what you're looking for. So you have somebody says, well, I wanna know what our dark sky ordinance is. And you put in dark sky, or lighting, or something like that, you can't ever find it. And then you have to go back and try to say, well, if I were a city councilman, and I knew all about the organization of the city, then I would be able to do this or that. But even sometimes our own staff can't find the reference point when you're saying, show me this. So I think those are real stumbling blocks. So those were my, my concerns, limiting clicks, making more easier to find, and I think keyword is something that the average user of any type of a device, whether it's smartphone, or laptop, or whatever, they're used to putting in a keyword, and at least getting close to where they're looking. And if you can put it by hierarchy of dates, so you're not looking at a keyword reference to a permit that's 25 years old, it's probably more recent that's gonna answer the question you're looking for. So those would be my initial concerns. Councilman Shishka again.
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it.
You know, Nate, our website is a great example of can't get there from here. And when we redid the website when I was a brand-new councilman, back in 2016, they had us come in, and they had us go, well, do you like this or this? And the problem was, is that they were, at the end of it all, they said, well, is this a better website? And the big question was, better than what? You know, so, I think that what do people want when they go onto a government website? They want information. So that one that you put up there about San Francisco, I'd love. I mean, I don't like much about San Francisco, but their website looked like it was very, very utilitarian. I could get to where I wanted to go. Now, the question I have is, you know how, when you're, when I'm on my, on my phone, and I'll type in, start typing letters, and all of a sudden, a whole bunch of, of, of options come down? Is that something that we could do with, with the search thing? Is if, you know, like dark sky, you know, DA, dark sky comes up, and several other things come up, and you can just click on one and away you go?
I'll look into it. It's a good idea, because I think part of the problem is that, from a IT web developer perspective, and I'm not saying this is right, but I don't have a mindset, anybody can search for anything. That's true. I gotta be ready. But having done a lot of forensic cybersecurity work forever, people are reassuringly or depressingly, however you wanna look at it, I won't say predictable, but generally gonna see a lot of the same types of searches over and over and over, so you gear your search for those, and you less worry about the things at the far margins, because you go for the herd essentially, the Pareto thing. If 80% of our stuff is in this cylinder, that's the focus. Or 20%. Other stuff, less important, and that would be a nice thing to add, but it's hard if you take the approach of like, anyone can search for anything anywhere, how do you set that up? Well, you don't. You go for the, the best bang for buck for search. When people hit search, what are they searching for? It's probably gonna be something recent and not something from years and years and years ago, and you kinda steer them that way. And if you're wrong, you're wrong. I would rather take that risk than what we do now on our site, where it's like a scattergun, here's everything in the world, maybe, maybe not related to what you're looking for, and then people give up, I think. It's a better, it's a better use of the public's time when they hit the website, to gear it toward, I'm gonna guess, like Google does, right? You start typing in Google, and it's like, oh, hey, I think you mean this. And you're like, how do you know that? Because I just had that thought pop in my head, but am I that predictable? It's a good angle. I'm gonna talk to our group about that, what would it be like? Because I think we definitely wanna tune our search, but that takes it to a different level of like, if people, if you buy what I'm saying, which is a lot of people search for a lot of the same things, then why not just gear the search to kinda follow that and forget about some of the other searchy things? That's what Google's for. That's what Bing is for, Dogpile, whatever you're using, DuckDuckGo. I pulled up the UK site. This is like the most extreme, not in a bad way, but it's like the most aggressive version of drill-in website. Super geared around get in, get out, and this inspired San Francisco, obviously. And so I'm starting with kind of a opposite approach we would normally take with this. I'm starting with the city council level, because we don't wanna do a big bang, take forever, building a ship rollout. We know we need to make some changes. I'd rather start making those changes and get feedback, good, bad, or ugly. You're probably gonna be the people to hear about it first, or the most. So I wanted to be prepared for that, or to say, look, that's a horrible idea, don't do that, that's really dumb. But I think we don't really wanna take a year, 18 months, two years to do this. We should be able to do it in a matter of months.
And assign someone full-time to be working on these modifications. Councilman Montoya.
Thanks, Mayor. I, I just wanna kinda echo, I'm also not necessarily a huge fan of the United Kingdom, or San Francisco for that matter, but I do like the idea of solving for simplicity. And I think in some ways that, you know, we may find that, you know, it may make us feel good to have this giant banner picture of thumb butted on our website, but what is it actually accomplishing, especially when you get down to that transactional level that you're talking about? And I, and I guess I, I wanna thank you for having some receptiveness to the idea that the website needs, needs improvement, because I think one of the things that could be hampering is, is not being willing to fix it. And I also like the idea that this isn't gonna be something where we, I mean, none of, none of the seven of us sitting up here are experts on websites that I know of. You know, so the idea of doing, you know, paralysis by analysis, because we could all pick apart the website for hours, I'm sure, if we wanted to. But the idea that we just kinda move forward and make adjustments going along, I think that's a really good approach. And so I just, I, I think that, I appreciate you recognizing that there's a challenge, and also being willing to move relatively quickly to fix it. So thanks.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. I would just like to stress the fact that it looks like Zoom meetings are gonna be here to stay. A lot of people stay home and Zoom our meetings now, and I just wanted to make sure that we made sure they were simple to use, accessible, and that the audio comes through and the video comes through properly, because I think this technology, people have really enjoyed using the Zoom option. And then another thing is, you know, we have these annual passes to our city parks, and if you could make that a whole lot more, I don't know, easier to do, because people get confused, because it's actually, we look at it as a parking pass, but the public looks at it as a pass to a park, not necessarily a parking permit kinda thing. So people get confused, and I think we'd sell a lot more if we made it a lot easier for people to figure those out. Those are just some examples.
No, that makes sense. And one thing I didn't really talk about is staff's involvement in this, right? They're kinda like, hey, what about staff? I think the risk when you do an update redesign, especially if you wanna do it quickly, is the tendency is to just run off and do stuff. We try to put more thought into it than that is an IT department, but it can't just be the IT department, right? It requires city manager's office, it requires IT, it requires the graphic designer, it requires the departments to produce content, services. And I think it's to make them aware that like, look, you get phone calls, I'm sure, at the city. What are people asking you about when they call you? Is it on the website? Can they find it? You could argue that when someone calls, either they don't care about our website, or the website has failed at that point because they have to call it, or show up in person, and they, I'm not saying we do it here, but, hey, the thing you need is at 123 Elm Street. All right, I'm gonna go to 123 Elm Street. You're like, no, 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 it's actually at 456 Maple Street. But the person that does that only works every other Tuesday if the full moon is out. And you're like, oh. And you're like, oh, man, government, what are we going to do? Government gets a lot of crap, some of it deservedly. But I think we need to do a good job of, it's like a yin-yang thing, what do people want? We give it to them. If what they are asking us to do changes, we got to adapt and give it to them. But you do that by doing the website changes more rapidly, and not this kind of idea, we got to launch a ship, and then we find out at the end of what's going to happen. Is it going to be a hot mess, or is it going to be successful? To Councilman Shishka's point. Is the website better after X amount of time? Well, if you're always making iterative changes to the site and adjustments based on what people are telling you, you'd lower the stakes. The stakes aren't, it's either going to work, or it's a dumpster fire. The stakes are, it works, and we're just tuning it up or down based on what people are telling us. That is much more sustainable. And you get around these blind spots